All right, well, it's 6:02. So I'll kick things off. Welcome to the, oh. Welcome to the Freeport Town Council Meeting 5-22?
Thirteen.
Thirteen-22, on July 5th, at the time 6:02, and we'll call the meeting to order.
There we go.
There we go. We'll start with roll call. We have tonight Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Counselor Fournier.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Egan.
Here.
Chair Pilch is here. Counselor Bradley is excused, and perhaps Counselor Lawrence will join us soon.
There is a pretty nasty backup on 295, an accident coming north, so.
Okay.
Just happened like around 5:15, so if he's traveling north, he's not going to be here on time.
Okay, we'll catch him up. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we have a waving of the reading of the minutes of Meeting 12-22, held on June 21st, and a motion to accept the minutes as printed. Any discussion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes are accepted as printed. Next, we have announcements, which I will try and get through without my reading glasses, so feel free to correct me if I say something that doesn't make any sense. Nomination papers for the November 2022 municipal election will be available on July 28th for the following offices in the town of Freeport. Town Council, at-large and District 1 seats, which are three-year terms. Sewer District has two seats, also a three-year term. The Water District has one seat for a three-year term. And our School Board, the RSU, has two three-year term seats and one seat for a two-year term. It's for a total of three seats on the School Board. These papers are due back to the Town Clerk by September 14th. Next up, the Public Works Department has started their annual catch basin cleaning and has also started paving Sparkov Road. They will start Arnold Road after the 1st of July. And last up, the town of Freeport has been working with GP COG to enroll in the State of Maine Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future Community Resilience Partnership. As part of the enrollment process, the town hosted a community workshop on June 22nd for the purpose of learning about climate hazards and impacts facing Freeport, to hear about priority projects that will help the town be more resilient, and for the community to give input on which projects should be prioritized for funding. Part of the workshop included a survey. The deadline to complete the survey has been extended and will close at the end of the day on July 8th, I believe. If you missed the workshop and want to review materials, or if you'd like to take the survey, please visit the town's website, where you find a post under Municipal News for the workshop recording and materials and a link to the survey. Anybody else have any announcements about upcoming events? Welcome, Counselor Lawrence.
Thanks. Were you on 295?
Thanks. All right, seeing none, move on. Information exchange. Do any counselors have information they'd like to exchange about board, committee meetings, or otherwise? Counselor Egan?
I had a great time on Monday walking in the parade, which went off without a hitch. I want to thank all the public safety folks who were out on the holiday doing traffic controls, a huge crowd, decent-sized parade. I was honored to walk with Freeport Climate Action Now, among many other different groups represented in our community, so it was a very fun event, fantastic weather, great small town, 4th of July. Thanks for public safety taking care of all that.
Any other information to exchange? Moving on to our next order of business, the Town Manager is due to give us a report. Mr. Manager?
I'll try to keep it to less time than you just took in that information exchange session. So one thing that I've been notified of here over the past week, notification from the county government that they're going to be holding the Finance Committee caucus on August 8th, 2022. This works a little bit differently at the county level, the finance process, the budget process. They start now, in August, they're going to meet. Our district, which is Brunswick, Harpswell, Chabig, North Yarmouth, Cumberland, Pownell, Freeport, Yarmouth, and Long Island, are going to meet, and we're going to nominate, I believe it's two, might be one, or it's two members of the Finance Committee. That Finance Committee works with the Finance Director and the County Manager to draft, they get a draft budget, similar to how the council operates here, you'll get a draft budget, they'll then forward that to the commissioners for final action. So what they are looking for are volunteers who want to serve on that committee. The municipal officers typically do that role. Here in Freeport, I think most recently, Lee Aris, when he was on the council, served as a Finance Committee member and was pretty involved. They have a lot of trouble filling these. Every year, it's like a half-full or two-thirds-full Finance Committee, and they're always looking for members after the fact. But if you have any interest at all in serving on the Finance Committee at the county level, it's a small part of the town budget, but it's a large budget, you know, county-wide that they administer. So get in touch with me, I'll set you up so that they know ahead of time that you're coming Monday, August 8th. Any of the municipal officers here, even if you don't want one of those Finance Committee seats, is welcome to attend and participate and vote for who our regional Finance Committee member is going to be here. So it's an interesting process. I don't think it gets a lot of attention, so I try to talk it up every year so that the council knows about it, and maybe you want to participate. Second item I have is that we have been working over the past couple of months, I've mentioned this to the council chair and vice chair, but want to bring it to the full council's attention. Excuse me. We have been working with Comcast, who are cable TV franchise holders. We are, believe it or not, our franchise agreement is up and have not had a active cable committee constituted during COVID. So we've worked with Comcast for the past couple of months. They are fine, and they told us that they are fine with extending the current agreement for a one-year, two-year period, but I think we'd prefer a one-year period, but we need to start that contract negotiation process with them. We haven't had a lot of interest from the community. We tried to make appointments to that committee about a year ago and didn't have any luck, no volunteers. There are two members of the community that have expressed extreme interest to me in serving on that, but anybody out there that does have interest, please let us know. I talked with the council chair and vice chair about maybe having a council subcommittee or a small committee working with those two residents and Tom, who's our cable TV guy who's in here, our director, who is just in here, in working with them. So our intent had been to go for a one-year holdover period, which they've agreed to, working with our attorney, and just, I think Dan and John wanted me to make sure the entire council is comfortable with that course of action, if that's something that I can approve, but that we need to get the ball rolling with establishing a committee to work on that whole process, because there haven't been any takers. So if there's any objections, just let me know, otherwise that's what I'll plan on doing for at least a one-year period. I think we don't want to extend it much longer than that, because we'll want to hold, I think, our own feet to the fire on that one to actually get it done. So that's that, and the two interested residents. I'm assuming one is interested, and the other one has expressed interest. One is Peter Anzuini, former counselor, who's talked with me extensively about cable, and he wants to serve on that or be involved in that process. I'm assuming, I guess I'm volunteering, the other one is John Goran, who's a former employee or employee of the town, part-time, current part-time employee who's worked in cable and community TV for quite a long time, for his entire career. So I'm assuming that he's got a lot of interest from his previous statements to me as well. So those two, any members on the council that want to be involved, just let Dan or John or I know. And I went longer than you, Dan, I'm sorry.
You definitely went longer than I did.
Now, back to you.
I was going to point that out, but thank you for bringing me to it. All right, so next up, we have our public comment period. So if anybody in the public wants to address the council on anything not on our agenda, this is the time to do it. The only item on our agenda that has a public hearing is the repeal of the pinball on video machine ordinance. So if you're here to talk about that, hold your comments till we get to that, which is coming right up after this. But if you're here to talk about anything else, now is the time. You can step up to the podium or raise your electronic hand on Zoom, tell us who you are and where you live.
We do not have any Zoom attendees other than staff and press.
You have any interest in stepping up to the podium?
You're all set.
All set, okay. So I think that does it for our public comment period. No need to encourage an empty room. So that brings us to the action items on our agenda, first up being the potential repeal of the pinball on video machine ordinance. So we've got a memo from the Town Manager, I think we got some background on it last time, so first we'll do a public hearing, and then we'll discuss. Counselor Pillsbury, do you want to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now in public hearings. So if anybody wants to talk to us about the repeal of the pinball on video machine ordinance, now is the time to do it. Tell us who you are, where you live, and what you want to say.
Hi there, I'm Colin Chaney, living in South Freeport. I know there's a lot of other people chomping at the bit here to get up to this mic, so it won't take it too long, but I was just very interested to, I'd heard some murmuring that there might be some interest in creating some more opportunities for young people, and I suppose not-so-young people, to gather in an arcade of some sort, and then heard that this was on the docket. So I just came out to say that I am in support of the repeal. I think it is a forward-looking thing for the town at a moment when I think we're all looking to bring as much energy, and particularly an energy that supports our young people and not-so-young people in the town. So I'm just very keen to see the repeal move forward, and curious to hear more of y'all's thoughts and anyone else in this room that cares to come up and speak after me. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, and thanks for speaking. Anybody else in the public want to address the council?
Again, nobody on Zoom waiting to participate, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Pillsbury, would you care to close the public hearing or make a motion to do so?
I make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And Counselor Pillsbury, one more time, would you care to read the motion itself?
Be it ordered that the repeal of Freeport ordinance Chapter 44, pinball on video machines, be approved. Second.
Any further discussion? We kind of chatted a little bit about this last time, there was a nice article in the paper about it, didn't seem to be a ton of controversy, not a whole lot of people speaking in support of keeping the ordinance, 100% of the comments we've heard have been for repeal. So any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion to repeal the ordinance?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go, the ordinance has been repealed.
Very persuasive, Mr. Chaney.
Yes, thank you for your comments.
Doesn't always happen like this.
Worth the trip up from South Freeport, I hope.
Yeah, all right. Ten-minute drive, right?
All right, next up, we have item 138-22 regarding lease for Verizon Wireless to use the water tank at Bow Street.
Could I just butt in really quickly on the be it further ordered, the furtherance of the order, there is the word extension in there that does not belong, you'll see it's cut and paste from the 139 below, second line, right-hand side, extensions. So whoever reads the, whoever you call on to read the order should not, it should say, effectuate said lease without the word extension.
Oh, because this is a new lease?
This is a new lease, the other two below are extensions.
Got it, answers my questions. Okay, got it. Counselor Fournier, do you want to read the be it ordered and the be it further ordered, and then we can discuss after?
Again, be it ordered that the new lease with a 25-year term for a new cellular antenna site at Towns Bow Street water tank held by Verizon Wireless be approved. Be it further ordered that the Town Manager be authorized to execute any documents required to affiliate any, excuse me, said lease, including any non-substantial alterations and/or amendments to proposed documents recommended by the Town Manager or Town Attorney.
Second.
Any update on this, other than?
There are a few details in the legalese that the Verizon attorneys and our attorney are working at, so there will be a few small changes. As I understand it, none of the key components of the proposed document are otherwise being intended to be negotiated. It's fairly in its finished form there, I think some of the questions were about insurance primarily in the wording in there. So this is a new lease for a location, a secondary location on that tank. Verizon has other locations in town. This would be either the second or the third slot on that tank, I forget which, but they want to increase their coverage, and this has been hung up for a long time in the water tank transfer, which is still being batted back and forth. I guess Main Water needs to take it back to their, all of their stakeholders, which include shareholders for their company, to make sure that they're getting what they want when they assume ownership, that they're not getting straddled down with something that they don't want. So that is a completely, well, it's not independent, they're tied together, but we got an extension from Main Water that gives us the right to execute these leases, and it'll be between the attorneys when I actually get the okay to sign off on it, but I want to have council approval. I don't think that there's anything on the town side holding any of these three items up. We're all, you know, generally in agreement, it just needs to be Main Water's attorney, the Town's attorney, and any legal people from Verizon or T-Mobile that need to iron things out, but.
Yeah, this will increase coverage downtown, so you can sit at McDonald's and say, "I'm here."
Yeah, we get a handful of complaints about that, so I'm eager.
Only a handful?
Are you sure? We each get a handful, yeah. Counselor Egan?
I just want to confirm my understanding, but I'm also for the general public, that even though we're contemplating turning over ownership of the tank to Main Water, we are going to retain the lease for the communication and the income that comes from the lease for the communication antenna. So that may not be readily apparent, that was my understanding, glad to hear that's confirmed, and we are absolutely encouraging Verizon to go ahead with these upgrades, so I'm all in favor of this.
Counselor Pillsbury?
What's the difference between the two lease agreements and the value of the lease? Because they're different, and is there a reason for that?
There is, nice catch. The positions on the tank are different, in part, and the tanks are different, have different values as well, and we requested that the T-Mobile extensions be uniform to both. T-Mobile had proposed different rate at one tank and the other, and we kind of smoothed them by saying we'd like them to be the same at both locations on the same term. So there are three completely different values between them, the two just look the same because they're, we asked for them, I think it was 2,500 per, we asked for that to be the same instead of 28 and 22, or whatever it was that they initially had proposed. So the values are pretty consistent. What, this will be the second new lease in five years, and the two extensions, so four kind of, you know, redone deals, and they've all been in the 2 to 2,500 range around here, and we are paying slightly less than that for the space that we leased that would be equivalent to cell carrier lease, and I think Chip works in the field, and he can probably confirm that's about the going rate these days.
It is, if you have a tower going, that's about the going rate. It depends on how many antennas you have up and what else you're putting on there. So if there's a radio or an antenna, size of the antenna, all that kind of stuff, takes effect on, I deal with towers, not necessarily water towers, but it's, but that is the going rate.
Appreciate the clarification. One follow-up, what's the reason for the change in, the difference in the annual escalators?
It's what one side would agree to and what the other side would agree to. So it's in negotiations, we got a little bit, I think, higher base rate with one, with the lower escalator, and the other one was fine paying a higher escalator. I think the one with the higher escalator is a higher-value lease as well. Well, the two, in some are higher value, one is much higher value, the other is a little lower value, so.
Counselor Fournier?
Not to do with this lease, but years past, we used to ask that they be in addition to the lease that would allow access for public safety equipment in buildings and emergency generators. Is that something that's still happening? Because I think now we're going with our own, at least building down there, if I remember right. But is that something that we should be asking for in the future in case we need to have, you know, additional help in that area?
We did, we have, one of our sites is powered by, is co-located with the telco in their equipment locker, using their backup power. Sorry, both of these are not, both of these have our own independent backup power on-site, because that's how we've been doing it for about, we've actually constructed, as part of the radio upgrade project, at Bow Street and at Winston Hill, we've constructed our own setups there, so they're in our own enclosures with our own backup power. But we'll continue to use, yeah.
And typically, that is something to do with the tower operator, not the Verizon or AT&amp;T or something, because AT&amp;T is just putting their stuff on the particular tower. So it's a, yeah.
But we, yeah, and we do have backup, at least two of those sites, I believe, Winston Hill, I believe also has, I'm not sure if we've got a backup generator up there, but that's not key. The key, the two key relay channels, we've got our own backup power at.
All I'm saying, if we can have that communication with the lease tower or whatever, because that's important down the road, that we don't get blocked out. So maybe keep that in the back of your mind, so as we move forward. Thank you.
I share Counselor Pillsbury's concern about the escalator. In the short term, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but if they take advantage of all the extensions, we could be getting a pretty, I think it's a 2% escalator for 50 years down the road, it's going to be, wind up to be a really sweet deal for them.
Well, it is in front of you for approval, so I guess any, I don't have the power, that's your call, if that's something that the council wants to see, I'm glad to take that back. You can approve it with the condition that if they agree to a 3% escalator, and I'll take it to them and have that conversation. If that's something the council wants to see in there, by all means, make that a condition of the approval.
Yeah, just to clarify, the way it is now, doing this mostly from memory, is it a 2% escalator every five years? So it's the same rate for five years, and then it's 2% more for five years, then 2% more for five years?
One is 15, one is set up every, 15% every five years, and the other one is, yeah, and the other one is set up 2% per each year. So there are three and two, effectively, yeah.
That's typical.
Oh, okay, as 2% on the anniversary of the commencement date. Okay, got it.
So 2% per year, and then 15% per five years, so.
That makes more sense to me.
So it's three and two, it is different. I mean, if we want those to be the same, I can go back and we can have that conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought it was 2% versus 15%, but if it's 2% per year versus 15% for every five years, I'm okay with it.
They may have to go back and talk with their people about whether that's acceptable at this point, so, yeah.
Okay with it. Any other discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of item 138-22 for the Verizon Wireless lease on the Bow Street Tower?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's a zero. Next up is item 139-22, similar item, this is for approving lease extensions for T-Mobile at two water tanks, both on Bow Street and Lookout Drive on Winston Hill. So Counselor Lawrence, would you read the be it ordered and the be it further ordered?
I'll try.
Without the extensions in it? No, this is as written, yeah, sorry, yep, yep.
Be it ordered that the two lease extensions with 25-year terms for existing cellular antenna sites at the Towns Bow Street and Lookout Drive Winston Hill water tanks held by T-Mobile USA be approved. Be it further ordered that the Town Manager be authorized to execute any documents required to effectuate said lease extensions, including any non-substantive alterations, right, and/or amendments to the proposed documents recommended by the Town Manager or Town Attorney.
Second. Sorry.
Good job.
So this one is in its final form, it's been signed off on by legal on all sides, I believe, except the final clearance between Main Water and the Town Attorney. So I don't anticipate any changes to the T-Mobile agreements, but there's the option there, if there are a few small changes, tweaks that need to be made after legal review, they'll tell me what they are, but they're in PDF form and ready to execute when we get the clearance, so. And these are existing sites, they've been in operation for 20 years possibly, or longer. They, T-Mobile bought Sprint, so there used to be Sprint and T-Mobile on each tank, and now they've, or, right, and they actually removed the Sprint equipment earlier this year, and the Sprint mounting points, Verizon is going to be reusing them, and so this will just let T-Mobile stay on both tanks for essentially 25 years. At market rate, for, that's pretty standard, what they're giving us for the locations, so.
Questions, discussion? All right, let's go straight to the vote on 139-22 for the T-Mobile lease extensions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Finally.
Six to zero. Last action item on our agenda is item 140-22, to consider action relative to voting for a position for the MMA Legislative Policy Committee. I think we have our deputy clerk in the running, and she's the only one in the running, I guess, from our town or our district?
Our district, yep. So in Harpswell, I did, after the last meeting, talk, both Carrie and I talked with their, only I very briefly, but Carrie extensively talked with the town administrator over there, and she's very happy to, she thinks that we'll do a great job, and was glad to take a backseat and let Carrie take it for this term. So it's good that we're all in agreement, so Brunswick is half, and Freeport and Harpswell are the other half of the Senate District, so we each get to nominate one person to the LPC.
So last time we nominated, and tonight we're actually taking the vote?
Correct.
And she's the only one on the.
And I'm assuming, based on what Christie from Harpswell said, that Harpswell will gladly endorse her as well, and she'll be off to the races when they start meeting. But that's not for sure until they take their vote at their next selectments meeting.
Counselor Daniele, would you read the motion?
Be it ordered that the council cast their vote for Carrie Weeman, deputy clerk, Town of Freeport, for the District 23 Main Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any discussion, questions? All right, thanks to Carrie for offering to represent us. All in favor of voting for Carrie Weeman?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. That motion carries as well, it's the end of our action items, we're on to other business. We have two items, the first is what we affectionately referred to at our last meeting as a fun permit, and I guess what's on the table now is, do we want to keep that ordinance around, or do we want to get rid of that one, just like we got rid of the pinball on video one?
We do, we do want to keep it. Let me, I'll give you a little, I've had some good conversations with staff, so don't want to scrap this one, just like the pinball, but do you want to make some changes to it? I'll just talk in big picture what those could be, and the council could say if you think that that's the right direction or not, and staff will do some drafting, and maybe meet with the ordinance committee if it needs more work. There is some value to this ordinance, because it puts the code officer in the room where the entertainment or, you know, activity is going to happen, and so he didn't feel like he was giving up anything, but for food inspections, food service inspections, because those are things that the state or the code officer can go and look in the kitchen, you know, pretty easily on a complaint, or if there's any concerns. This one actually inspects life safety, specifically egress, like think about dance floor, concert hall, things like that. We don't have a lot of them, but we do have a few where there are dance floor and bands, and anybody could decide to put one in at any time, and what he does when he does those, looks for, and usually in conjunction with the fire department, look for egress and fire suppression. So really, you know, they're thinking like station nightclub fire scenario, like if there was an emergency, how do people vacate the premises safely? So he thinks there's a lot of value to yearly going and doing those, doesn't necessarily have the time to do that easily, but thinks there's a lot of value to it. However, what appears to be the hangup that's slowing things down, or that it requires a public hearing in front of the council for a new issuance, when there's not even anything for people really to react to, so we talked a little bit about what that, how that could kind of. that could kind of be approached, and, and staff is thinking a kind of shell issue permit if they meet code and zoning for everything else. Like if they're in compliance, the site is in compliance, no code issues and no zoning issues, they just automatically get the permit after an inspection for egress and life safety. If there are complaints throughout the year, any complaints really about the operation, that would then trigger on renewal a hearing in front of the council where somebody could raise it. Because we don't, I shouldn't say that. My, my time here, we've had one over 10 years where somebody even raised a concern about volume levels, and it was for an event, and sure enough, they're like, oh yeah, great, we'll turn it down and point the speakers the other way, and it was resolved. So these don't get public engagement. You know, we have, what, five, 10 a year that just sail through. So in that case, if there had been a complaint, it would get hauled in front of the town council, the same way it did that year, and there could be a public hearing, the person get up and say, hey, that's disruptive to our neighborhood, or I don't like this, or they're doing that, or they're making noise late at night. It's almost always noise complaints, or foot traffic, or things like that, those complaints. So that was our proposal, that would let them come in, you know, maybe not same day, but same week, come in, sign up, have the code officer make sure that life safety is good, that there's nothing, no death trap in the building, sign off on it, they get their permit, they can have their acoustic guitarist playing that Friday night if they come in on Monday or Tuesday, or at least the next, you know, the next week. But right now, somebody comes in and they, they're on a four-week wait, because there's a notice, you guys have to take, you have to take action to set a public hearing, then you have to hold the public hearing, and then they get issued their permit. So it's automatically a four-week process, and that's the thing that's getting frustration with people. They line somebody up to do entertainment, you know, like now, this week, and they're told, like, yeah, come back in September, and we'll take care of it for you. Because we don't, we only have one meeting in August, right? So it's not quick. So that's staff's thought on how we could speed it up a little bit. It would take away that initial public input on the first one, but we, I've never seen one that's generated public input on the first time. It's only after they've been operating that they generate complaints, and then people are like, oh, I don't like that happening. Two parcels over from me, it's making a lot of noise, which is legit, and we could address it that way. So.
Counselor Egan?
Am I correct that the permit regulates or governs establishments that already are put up for providing music and dancing, and then want to serve alcohol, or is it for alcohol-serving institutions that then want to have music? Does the permit go both ways?
It does, but it's usually, you don't need it without both present, but it's usually the second one. It's usually a restaurant or a bar that wants to have entertainment that never has before.
Right.
So the oyster bar is a great example. They were new, they were starting out, they got their liquor license, but then they couldn't add the musician playing on the porch on Thursday and Friday.
I guess my, my point is if we're, if we're requiring a permit for an establishment that's already serving alcohol in order to have music to go with that, isn't there a pretty safe assumption that the establishment serving alcohol is already inspected and has lots of other permits to get in order to get that liquor license?
There were probably three that were, let me, let me step back, and I think the code officer's answer was, yeah, I don't find anything anymore, because we've already fixed all the problems, the first round of these, or the second round of these that they did, you know, three or four years ago when they found them. But it doesn't mean that somebody opening a new establishment may not, they may not have made changes, they may have blocked an exit door, or something like that. I mean, all of the premises where this, where entertainment goes on, I'll say, you know, think stage band, 50 people in the audience, or 100 people in the audience. Not huge, but could get a medium-sized crowd. Those were all, those were all code compliant at some point, but over time, either entrances or exits got blocked off, things got stacked, walls got built, doorways got made. I don't think it's a huge problem, no, but I just.
Regardless of whether there's dancing and music going on, the assembly of that many people would be governed by other permits and inspections and insurance that that purveyor must already have in place. I guess I'm seeing, I, maybe I just need to talk to the code officer to hear that, but if, if, if the prevalence of this permit was the other way, where it was small folk clubs, music clubs, galleries, open spaces that routinely and fairly regularly have music, and maybe even some dancing, and then they wanted to get a liquor license to go with that, then, you know, I'd rely on all of the diligence and screening and inspections that go with getting a liquor license. I guess that's, I'm having trouble understanding what we're actually getting with this permit that is not already in place and covered elsewhere.
Yeah, not much, just an annual set of eyes, to be honest. And I would propose to keep the, I mean, if, maybe you don't like my idea, and that, that's fine. I, I urge towards, less regulation is better. I agree. It's just a, I want to note from the safety perspective, like if this went away tomorrow, very unlikely there's going to be any event in Freeport that's going to become a tragedy because, you know, something like this happens. But we're not there every year looking at the assembly place. That's, that's the hangup. So.
But are others?
Yeah.
A liquor license establishment doesn't have to have an annual inspection? Somebody else?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
So you get your liquor license in 2020, and nobody comes back to see your building till you want to come have dancing?
I'll be accurate.
We renew the liquor license every couple of years for the first few times, right?
But they're not getting annual inspections through that process. I don't think so. Right. I mean, to be fair, you're absolutely correct, John. The building is built, certified compliant at the time, certified to mediegress, and if nobody does anything to it.
Gets blocked and.
Right. If nobody does anything to it, fine. And this is only a concern because of the entertainment kind of crowding factor that it could generate. If everybody's at their table and equally spaced out in the restaurant, and God forbid, there's a fire breaks out, something like that, you're distributed, you've got five different egress points, people generally get out of that without any trouble. It's the, everyone's had a couple beverages and is crowded on the stage. I don't expect there to be, you know, 500-person deep, you know, state theater crowd in, in Freeport, but there could be 100 people, 50 people for an event that are in a place, maybe that doesn't have, if it's had an egress blocked or something like that. So it's just kind of the crowding, the liquor, and the noise and entertainment may, in very rare situations, cause an incident.
Counselor Daniele?
So could we just change the liquor license to say there's a potential that you could have an annual inspection, or an annual or more frequent inspection as needed, and get rid of this one? Like why don't we just add it into the other one, one line? Done.
I think that's a state process. I don't think we have our own liquor licensing stuff. We just do the.
So change this one then, to just, the whole ordinance is just, we may come and see you if you have a liquor license.
Fine with that. Is, if there's, if there's some preserved, right, what, doing the annual permit would, you know, in theory, we're supposed to be there, it's going to force us to be there every year. And I would say, most of the times, we are.
Counselor Corneille?
Sorry, Jake, did you have?
Two questions. We used to inspect these properties annually without a permit or not, all of our downtown. Is that not being done now?
And by inspect, what do you mean?
We would physically, I'm talking fire department. A fire department inspector, we go out to all of our retail establishments to go in with, with a special music permit or not, to make sure egress were open, to make sure storage was below the sprinkler systems. Has that stopped?
They do walkthroughs frequently. I don't know if it's on a scheduled basis, and I don't know if it has been for years. And there's nothing that says that we can do that either.
I think.
If it's public and it's open, Nick and any fire officer can walk in at any point in time. If it's, if it's in a closed, so, so this was the code officer's point. If it's in a closed space, locked door, something like that, you can't enter without a warrant. So, I mean, even a life safety inspection, Nick would still have to go to, if there, if we had a legitimate concern that there was something non-code compliant behind a locked door, or in a place posted keep out, that doesn't give the town code officer the right to go and inspect it, or anyone from the fire department, or the police department. Code officers do have to go and get, show probable cause, that, hey, I think there's something going on here, it's been reported to me. Judge almost always grants entry. But with this process set up this way, if they don't, if there's a concern and they don't grant entry, they don't get their permit. That's why it's set up that way, so to allow mandatory inspections at all times of any entertainment establishment.
Which, so I'm still confused. We're not inspecting our downtown business sections that, it was done under me, and it was done with authority that we could go in. So if that's been taken away, then that's a discussion point for another, another day. My second point is, I don't want to put more work on the code enforcement officer. So maybe in this case, I think we have adequately trained people who are certified under NFPA for fire inspectors that could also do the egress checks. So maybe we do two, let's, let's put a redundancy in our system that we don't set ourselves up for failure because of workloads or wherever else comes down. That would be one recommendation I would make to.
And I think they are doing, I just want to be clear, I think there are inspections of public-facing establishments, retail and things like that that are happening, Daryl. So, but to your other point, I don't care who it is, as long as they're, as long as they pass the, exactly the certification test, right? If they can get several people down there, certainly, I know they've got a few, if they can get enough to do a, do a regular rotation certified, doesn't matter to me if it's fire department, doesn't matter to me if it's code officer, as long as somebody knows what they're looking for for egress looks at it. So.
Counselor. So I think what we're trying to do here is just say, don't come to the town council to ask for permission. Everything else should be okay, and you get inspections and all that. But because it takes, you gotta have a week to say, hey, we're going to do this, and then two weeks to do the public hearing to say whether you can, we don't really need to do that. It should be town administrative people that do that.
And, yes, and to answer, and to tack that on to the previous question, I would not want to put more work on the code officer either. He's doing this already as it is on a yearly basis. I think he'd love not to have to do it, but he said, we said, well, do you want to stake it away? He goes, no, there's some value in that. So I've never heard anybody say, hey, can we take work away from you? And them say, ah, we really shouldn't, because he honestly thought that in a couple of these, he had some catches, and the previous, you know, people at the fire department previously had made some catches too, on going into entertainment spaces and being like, hey, that, where's your second form of egress from a lower level, or something like, you know, I mean, like legitimate things that could really, not like they likely would, but, you know, 1% chance of something really bad happening is still a pretty bad thing that I don't want on my conscience. So, but yes, the, kind of the, what I'm bringing to you is a potential proposal would be, it comes to the council if there are problems, similar to the short-term rental ordinance and the way it's set up. Like if somebody complains, regardless of how it's resolved, or who it's resolved in favor of or against, there should still be a public hearing the next year at the council where that person has a chance to air their grievances publicly.
Or the next meeting, or whatever. But right now, if you have a, if you want a permit, you go to the town, if you pass all the inspections, you get your permit. It doesn't need to come to us, and that can be a lot quicker versus a month process.
For initials, there's no, I mean, there's not anything to really compare it to. It's not like a site plan review where you have, this is what's being built on the property in hard terms that you can look at. Somebody's saying, hey, I'm proposing to have a this at my bar on Saturday night, and you guys are kind of like, okay, what the heck? Great. I mean, there's not a lot of standards in it now as it is. So, so initially, I have never seen one of these get shot down. On, on renewal, we have had very infrequently points brought up about noise, or traffic, or things like that, which I think are legitimate and should be addressed publicly. But that should kind of be the trigger that slows it down. Every, like.
Everything else would be.
99.5% of these don't have anybody ever caring or wanting to go deeper on them. So those should streamline, quick, get it done. If there is an issue, it comes back to you the same way it would have anyways.
I agree. I'm for this.
And, and the other, and the other part about not requiring it, kind of what John proposed, that is a viable alternative, or Jake, what you were saying, if you want to make the ordinance just say, hey, we can come in, you know, inspections on demand, that's less like rigid. It doesn't mean they're going to get looked at every year, but that does give us, like, you know, town may inspect for these things at any point in time. You know, and if not, then you lose your ability to do it. And otherwise, it's an auto issue permit or something like that.
Counselor Corneille?
Things change over the years, and I know from experience, you come in the building, everything's fine. And I've seen it as much as two months later, something come in. So I think it's wise, if we're going to go in and we're going to have, you know, occupancy, a larger number of people, we check the egress, we check the protection for the building, and, but, you know, I fully support not coming to the council versus complaint, but I just don't want it hung on only the code officer. I want to see it done, you know, with a couple other people.
Sure.
Fair enough, yeah.
I'm sure he would like that too, not having to do them if we could get other people to help. So.
Definitely, yeah.
Yep.
What about establishments that don't serve liquor? So if I open an underage dance club, and I have, you know, 300 people come, shouldn't we also be inspecting that and making sure it's safe?
I think the thought is that people's natural reactions are slowed when they're inebriated, and that's probably where this generated from. I don't think it's the only situation where you could have a problem with, with congregation though. No. I mean, those, those properties do have, I think to get to Daryl's point, those properties do have to meet code when they're reviewed. So when you're putting in a place of assembly, you're, let's just say you're building from scratch. You're building a dance club that doesn't, you know, all ages, doesn't necessarily have to, you know, no alcohol on premise or whatever. You're still going to have to meet the same, you're going to be building to the use of, you know, congregation or whatever, congregate use of this type of assembly, and you have to meet the same standards. But you don't have people that are intoxicated on your premise that need to exit in an emergency. In theory, everyone's clear-headed, rational. It's kind of like the difference between a hotel room and a residence. There are higher standards in a hotel room, because it's not a familiar place when you wake up in the middle of the night disoriented, when there's a fire or an emergency situation, as opposed to at your house. You can, you know, you roll out of bed, you know, the steps and the stairs and all that kind of stuff. If there's smoke in a hotel, you don't know where you are, you don't know where the exits are. So it's kind of like a different, you know, human nature behaves differently in those type of situations. Doesn't mean it's the only place. I mean, we could, it's sounding like maybe this needs a little work at the ordinance committee in development. So.
Yeah, it might be worth looking. I'm thinking, and I know, schools are probably separate, but if, you know, there's an assembly place for the performing arts center, let's say, you know, there's often younger children who, you know, we might want to make sure that, that the egress is as clear as it could be, and sprinklers are working and all that. So a combination of things. But I also don't want to have this balloon into, you know, anytime there's more than 10 people gathering, you need to all of a sudden get permits every year. I think that's a little excessive. So.
Understood.
Yeah.
You could set an arbitrary limit of any, you know, we could maybe look into, match it up a little bit with current building code, like what size, you know, number of people triggers a certain use group. I know that they've got 50s and hundreds or something like that for different assembly groups and things like that.
Okay.
If I remember right, NFPA 1 triggers on assemblies. And the state has adopted NFPA 1, and that triggers, and that could be a, like the teen center, as an example. If the teen center was going to have something down for an event, it may trigger once they get over a certain occupancy limit.
And that would be an annual fire inspection?
Yeah, well, it may be for that, once it triggers that, yeah.
Okay. But it sounds like consensus is, you know, make some tweaks, but we don't need to see it at a council to do these permits. They should kind of auto-renew, but we want to have the right to inspect them every year.
Yeah.
Could we get rid of the permit, though, and just say that if you have an event with more than X number of people, we have the right to come in and check it for fire safety? And if you're found in violation, then you must go before whatever to get a permit, or, you know, then at that point, you know, we'll be checking you more frequently?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, we could probably come up with some wording like that.
I mean, the other point, though, is that permits in theory are tied to facilitating the work needed for this. So this is a source of revenue to support staff being able to do these functions. So if we get rid of all this stuff, we may not have the ability to get additional staff help to help with the overload. I mean, if everything's just sort of, no worries, you don't have to have a fee, you don't have to have a permit. I mean, that's a, it is a source of revenue for the town to support the functions of ensuring lives and health safety for these events.
How many do we do a year?
I don't know. They're not, they're not that many. How many do, I mean, they come here, how many do we have each? Oh.
And how much do they cost?
Hold on a second, let's see if this works. Trying to say, yeah, there you go. We've got our, hold on, you're not on the screen yet, Chris. Only Dan and I can see you. So, there we go. Go ahead, Chris.
They're $125, and we have seven.
So it's not huge.
Not big at all.
So $700 cover the cost of having people go out, or do we just say, we may not go see every business every year, but when we feel like it, if there's a complaint, we have the ability to do it anytime we want?
Yep.
I mean, it's also reducing staff time for just handling the permit process. Just, I don't know, I could see getting rid of it mostly, you know, really paring it down, not having people come in. not having people come in.
Yeah, honestly, that's kind of where I started, where I thought that this was gonna end up until I found out that they actually find things once in a while, so I, as long as we can keep that inspection perimeter in there, I don't care if it's a yearly permit, I don't care if it's not a yearly permit, like what Council Danielle just suggested, as long as there's the right to, to put eyes on the situation on a regular basis. Maybe it doesn't need to be annually, maybe the, you know, town staff knows the person who operates it and it's always the same and it's always super clean, but then you've got somebody who's always moving boxes and stacking giant plywood structures in front of the exit doors, like have been known to happen, and it's like every time you go in there, like what Counsel Fornier said, every two months, there's something else stacked in front of the exit door, then those need to be looked at every two months to make sure the exit doors stay clear, and they need to be starting to get written citations as opposed to just once every year, every three years, if the site is generally clean and well-maintained, so.
I feel like between everybody who works for the town, we probably visit most of these places every couple of months anyway, so if there was a problem, somebody could say, hey, maybe we should go inspect this one. But I also don't like having a fun permit on our, I don't know, there's just something about that that bugs me.
Why do we have a fun permit?
But if we called it a safety permit, it'd be different, man. Do you want to take a stab at making suggestions or revisions at staff level, and if you feel like it needs ordinance to get involved before we bring it back to council, we can work with you on it?
Well, I can put the town planner, the code officer, myself, and anybody else who wants to play in that fun box, that nice sandbox, we can all get together, and I'm sure we'll, after spending an hour and a half, you know, strangling each other, because this is such a ridiculous process, we'll come to something that maybe works, and we'll bring it to, we'll.
Yeah, and if the stuff is unresolved, then we'll do it at ordinance.
Yeah. So, John, feel free, we'll, we'll get you in the group, so.
So look at it as try to get, or reduce what the restriction is as much as possible, but keep the safety there so that we don't have to see it and people can do whatever they need to do.
Yep. So I, I started on this like the victual, like, oh, this is a duplicative process, and it mostly is, but there's a few things that sometimes there are good catches.
Right, and it's all, it's all about safety, I mean, it's, it's the doors being blocked, so.
As opposed to victuals where we don't have somebody who is a licensed food inspector and the state does that anyways, that seems kind of foolish for us to have that process. But where we do have NFPA certified people at the fire department and the codes office who can do simple egress inspections, that one, and that's much more likely to.
Maybe that's the whole thing, if your egress is clean, you're good to go, and if it's not, then you need to get a permit.
Right, that's much more likely to be a life safety threat than like, you know, the overly ripe brie at the restaurant or something like that, you know, so.
All right. Great, thanks. Last item on our agenda is discussion regarding the Nembah Mountain Bike Trail Proposal at Hedgehog Mountain. So, I think we've met once since we had that public forum, so I don't need to rehash that, but we had a full house here in council chambers, representatives from Nembah, from Conservation Commission, most of the council, I think, was there. A lot of broad community support, but also some pretty valid questions about ongoing maintenance and ADA accessibility and a handful of other things, parking and bathrooms. So the, the way it stands now is the Conservation Commission has given themselves a deadline of December of this year to update the management plan for Hedgehog Mountain. But until then, there's no indication of whether they're, as a commission, in support of the mountain bike trails or not in support of the mountain bike trails. So I think the, the reason this is on the agenda is, you know, as a council, do we want to direct the Conservation Commission, make a recommendation to the Conservation Commission, ask the Conservation Commission for something before December? Do we want to take any kind of action, or do we just want to sit around and wait till Counsel Egan?
I think we should have a, a clear presentation of enthusiasm and support for the proposal in broad terms, not in specific terms, and let them negotiate sort of how they're gonna manage, because I know part of the reason for December is to allow for some assessment of seasonality of vegetation, and, but I think it would be wise for the commission to have absolute clarity and no doubt at all of the position of the council. I'm hoping that is in strong favor of approving the proposal. That's not guaranteed at this point, but, but I think we could have those two things happening parallel so that we don't get to an updated the management plan in December, and then it's like another four months of hashing out and contemplating how the proposed plan fits into the updated management plan of Hedgehog. I think the updates and the review of the management plan could be, and in my opinion, my individual opinion should be, in the context of trying to find a way to incorporate essentially most of, of the proposal from Nembah to install at their expense, the mountain bike trail design that we, that we saw.
Got it. Chip?
I, I, my feeling is that, talking to a few people, and I haven't talked, I wasn't at the meeting with you guys all, but that the issue wasn't whether people wanted to have mountain bike trails there, I think everybody wanted to have biking bound, mountain bike trails. Problem was the height, because you want to have ups and downs and all that kind of stuff, and to do that, you had to go through some conservation areas, shall we say, and then there was the safety issue of people walking up the trails and crossing the trails, right, crossing speeding bikes going down. But I think everyone's working towards having bike trails there, because it's, it's a great exercise and a great thing to have, and between the two, Bradbury Mountain and our mountain, I think it'd be awesome, but I think that's where, that's where the thing is, not that, hey, yeah, we think we should have it, but the biking association says, we need to have height too, and that's where the problem lies. Is that?
Yeah, I think the, there's some confusion around how to define summit, because the existing management plan from 10 years ago says mountain bikes aren't allowed on the summit or the summit area or something like that. So there, the discussions that I've heard have been around if we go, you know, almost up to the summit on the backside, the trails on this side, we come up that side, but we don't actually have bikes and people at the same place on the top. That's, I think, what they're trying to get to. There's some concern about, you know, you can say the trail ends here, but, you know, everyone's gonna want to see the same view if you're up there. So there's some discussion around that. But, but yeah, I think the Conservation Commission will probably have to figure out where you draw the line around what the summit is, and then where do you allow the, the mountain bike trails? But they have, they definitely have those concerns, for sure.
The presentation involved from the trail builders, clear illustrations of how they build high arc bridges for the bikes to go over the walking trail, so there won't be any cross, cross-traffic. Theirs concerned about that as, as the hikers would be.
Yeah, Counsel Pillsbury, and then Fornier?
I mean, I think there's some, the public brought up some other really legitimate concerns, and one that particularly resonates with me is the ongoing costs of maintenance, upkeep, upkeep and management for the town, because after the project is fundraised and it's built, essentially what we heard is, I mean, that's the end of it, in terms of, you know, the people who raised the money. But that's gonna be an expensive thing for us to maintain. We heard from the Conservation Commission that the town doesn't give them nearly as much money as they need to appropriately maintain, they said in a tactful way, but I think we underfund that if that is such, if, if that's something, if these natural properties are of importance, I, I think we should look to see what we should do to better support them financially. But I do worry that we're gonna have this thing, it's gonna be great, but it's an ongoing liability and it's gonna be put on the backs of all the residents in town. And maybe that's okay, but to me, that's a big, it, it's something that I don't take lightly, because I'm not just gonna say, we'll figure it out. And I know the folks that spoke passionately for the project said, you know, we take care of our own, we're gonna be there to support and volunteer and help, but to me, I, I need more of a, I need more of a concrete plan. And so, that is something that I'm looking to see out of this. And I'm not saying that I don't believe the project is worthwhile, I'm just saying that that's a huge concern for me.
Okay. Daryl?
I think it's an exciting project, I didn't talk to Matt, but he almost sounds like me, and I agree 100% with you, Matt. I, I want to see a fund setup that will cover the ongoing expenses. During our budget presentations, we had a gentleman that was talking about creep, and we do get creep in this town, and I don't care whether it's, you know, public works issues or this issue, or mowing the lawns or whatever, so that would be something I would strongly would like to see, because I, and one of the other comments were made, the people were very disappointed with the, going to Bradbury Mountain because the trails aren't being maintained now, the state has cut funding, and, and it's kind of deterring them from going up, so let's, you know, let's make this coming out of the gate something that will be successful for a good many years, and, and so I think funding's certainly a part of it. But I'm, I'm support of having this here.
Got it. Jake?
I think the Bradbury Trails weren't machine-cut, and that they're proposing to do machine-cut trails, which would greatly reduce the amount of maintenance, and, I mean, I, I'm not an expert on this kind of stuff, but I think that Bradbury has deteriorated because of the way the trails were built, and that these trails would be cut, so there won't be the roots in there that get ruts and everything, so I think it would be a, a better situation.
Less maintenance.
I am certainly in favor of this project going forward, but I don't want to alienate the Conservation Commission either. I think that they may feel like we're pushing all of this on them and they need to act quickly and do things, and that, you know, like, I, I would have honestly been in a position earlier where I would have said, hey, let's just say yes and tell them we're doing this, let's go, but I think we chose the more tactful approach of, you guys said it, you guys are the ones who we've asked to manage this property, and so I'm just a little concerned at their feelings, I guess, in this, and that we don't step on too many toes. Because they are volunteers and they do a good job.
Yeah, they spend a lot of time, Matt.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a great point, and it's also a fine line between getting so many people involved and slowing the project down and being able to be more nimble and quick, but at the same time, this seems like a large enough project where it really could be one of the key parts of our downtown visioning. Who else do we need to engage in this? Because I worry a little bit that some of these projects might develop on their own in isolation, and what we really need is, and I know, I know, Dan, you're, you know, the monthly meetings that you're having to sort of keep the visioning on track and, and engage stakeholders is combating some of this, but I do worry, okay, we fundraised all this money, we sunk money into, you know, Hedgehog, but then it's not connected anywhere, it's not part of the big, the big picture, whereas if we had thought a little bit more logically about it, maybe there's a way to fundraise for the trails and, and some connection, or there's a way to, to increase the scope of the project a little bit to make it more viable and better, like we heard folks stand up and say, you know, ADA compliance, and is there an ability for us to have some access out there for that? I mean, I'm just wondering, like, I don't want to rush, but I also don't want to go too slow where we just never get anything done, but I think these, this is gonna be the crux of the problem, developing all our plans for the visioning, how do we do them in the right way and get the most leverage and the most bang for the buck?
I, I think we're already kind of doing that, the first big step is the bridges that are being built. It gets you from here to over there safely.
Almost over there.
Almost over, you're right, we still need to build the trails, but you've seen what Adam has put together and all the trails that are supposed to be going right by there and then down Murch Road over to, so it's a big trail, so I, I agree with you, it needs to all be kind of coordinated, but it, it kind of already is because we have the plan to build the trails out to that spot, or not to that spot, but past it, right? And, and I think having that, and you saw what, I guess Greg Michaud did with the different areas, that is all part of this process, and because it's broken up, we can do them kind of individually, because eventually they will be all connected. At least up until Murch Road, past Murch Road, I don't know, but.
Connect Freeport meets, you know, monthly on this kind of stuff, and so they are an active part of this plan, and I think having Hedgehog being developed, and then you say, oh, let's get to the desert of Maine, and that just invigorates everybody, everybody's excited to make those connections, and that's what's gonna keep it happening. We can't just say, oh, let's make the, you know, let's connect everything and then figure out what happens, like, having these big moments, like, oh, everybody's super excited about Hedgehog, oh, now I want to get downtown, and that's what'll let that project go together.
So it's gonna be, looks disjointed, but there is a kind of a plan for all of it to be connected, I think.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I don't have the solution to this, I'm just saying, I'm pointing out that it seems like we've got Conservation Commission, the mountain bike group working on this, and I'm just saying, let's always be mindful to bring people into this, not at the detriment of the project to slow it down, but because if we're gonna put in time and money, let's make sure it's wisely spent, and I just, it's so, it's so loose at this moment because we're still in the development phase on all this stuff, I'm just, I think it's just a, a point to just constantly be aware of.
Yeah, so these are, I've been taking notes, these are really good points, and I do think the Conservation Commission, I don't want to say they're overwhelmed, but they've got a lot on their plates. Typically this time of year, they're, you know, they're building bridges and clearing trails and posting trails and things like that, and as you guys mentioned, they're all volunteers. So I think that's, that's part of the, why things are taking a while. But it sounds like there's a pretty good consensus from us that says, we really want to see something happen, so we'd like you to, to move this forward a little bit, let us know what help you need, if you need somebody else to kind of join the, into the, into the mix, we're happy to do it. And we have some specific concerns that, you know, we'd like your opinion on, like, you know, how do you deal with the summit area and ongoing maintenance plans and costs, and safety in terms of, of trailer crossings, I, I'm also concerned about parking and things like that. So, maybe they can get a, a working group together and come up with an iteration of the plan, but we'd really like them to, to be at least chipping away on it, because if, I, I want them to know that the council is very heavily in support of doing something rather than nothing.
Right, and I also think the big thing is we don't want to lose Nembah's interest.
Right.
Although I don't think we will.
Right.
I think it runs longer than two months or six months.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I don't, we want to make sure that they're still interested, so.
Yeah, Jake?
Should, should we be negotiating with Nembah and coming up with that and, and doing that on the side while the Conservation Commission is doing it? Like, would that help them?
I'll, I'll make that offer to them, saying, if you want us to, you know, to your point earlier, right, I don't want to overstep them and say, hey, let us do it, then we'll tell you, but I'll say, if you guys are having trouble, you know, with the, making the time to do it, happy to, you know, have one of us or two of us step in and do it.
Who are like pre-approved, you know, and maybe like, we're like, yeah, we would like this, and then we can get their input once the plan is done, but that way Nembah knows, hey, you know, we are actively working on this and we want to get a solution, and we could check in with them at a couple of their meetings, saying, hey, we made these tweaks, what do you think now?
Yep. Is that an offer to volunteer?
I would.
Okay, awesome. Daryl?
So, is there a staff person that is helping the Conservation Committee?
Not really.
Exactly.
I mean, Earl's doing a, a bunch of work, helping them move things around and all that, but, but there's no.
On this one, it's essentially, are you the liaison?
I'm the liaison, yeah.
It's essentially Dan and I attending their meetings, so, from time to time.
So to that point of, well, not trying to burn out volunteers and, and all this stuff, is the time we looked at that, because I think that would help the communications, I think that would help the work process to move things forward. I think, you know, it's very difficult to have these people come in, so maybe it's time we say, you know, we're gonna assign a staff person to help on all these projects and make, make it a little more efficient. I like, you know, Jake's idea that, you know, a couple of councils move that forward, but sometimes we put a lot on these, these committees, and maybe here's a chance to give them a little bit of assistance and, and, you know, we really appreciate what they're doing and help them with that.
One comment I've heard from a few different places, residents, a few people on the Conservation Committee, is that we don't have a dedicated parks committee, or park staff here, right, it's Public Works that also does grounds maintenance, that also does parks, and a lot of other towns have a separate parks department, and it's a time for us to do that, and do we want to absorb that cost, and, you know, anyway, there's, I think that's for a future year, probably a future council, but that has been floating around too.
It was a great show, Parks and Rec, I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
We certainly have the need for it, but not the capacity to do, to dedicate full-time staff to that.
We don't, right, we don't have the budget and the people, but there's stuff for them to do if we had them, yeah.
I think we've identified that there's always some demand from, you know, and our grounds maintenance people just do established kind of park areas and things in Freeport, we don't have the staff, we probably need to add a few people to do adequate maintenance at Hedgehog and Florida Lake and, you know.
Maybe it's like a part-time summer person, earned season person, yeah.
Get Neil, two or three people to work.
I've had a part-time seasonal vacancy at buildings and grounds for two years now.
Yeah, but, I mean, this, this kind of is a bigger question than just the Hedgehog Mountain and the Conservation Commission, right, I mean, look at all the planning and the resource and time we've spent for the visioning, we're at the beginning part of it, and all of a sudden we are, we're just asking people to give their time to spearhead projects and to go out and do this and do that, I mean. I mean, is it time to take a look and see what sort of staffing we might need to put to this? Otherwise, we can do it on people's goodwill and their spare time, but it is going to take us 10 times longer, and where's the balance? I mean, I don't, I'm not advocating, let's go out and, you know, triple the size of the town staff, but let's be wise in how we're spending our money. If we want to change our town, and have it be more vibrant and thriving, we might have to put some resources to it, not just all of our, like, spare time.
But, but I do like the spare time, because then it says, everybody, or there's a lot of people that are involved in this, and there are townsfolk that are willing to give up time, so they have, we have instant knowledge that, yeah, this is something that we want to do, and all that kind of stuff, so maybe it's not someone that takes care of it, maybe it's just someone that coordinates, you know, and, and that's what their job, just to make sure everything is, and they don't even have to say, you got to do this now, and you do this now, it's like, oh, they're doing this, and they're doing this, and they're doing that, okay, if we, they could look at it and say, oh, you know, if we got all this together and did this, we get all that done, and, so I don't, but I do like having the committees, because it does bring in.
Yeah, I don't think it's an either-or, right? I think it's keep the committee.
Keep the committees, and I, I think the coordinator could be something that is exactly that, just a coordinator, and it's not a lot, but it's something that knows what, everything's going on from the committee point of view, and can coordinate all the efforts, so we get the most.
Yeah. Dara?
And instead of using existing staff, it's a time we look at having someone come in and, and hire them specifically for this task with a eight-month time period.
Yeah.
You know, that might be a wise way to do that. We have monies coming in, possibly they're coming down to downtown visioning, and it gets back to us, so that we don't have the burden of coming up to increase more workload on our current staff, but yeah, we could bring someone in temporarily.
I think we already have someone, right? We just did the, couldn't that be part of the, the staff position? Couldn't that be part of the staff position we just did for?
Sustainability.
Huh? Sustainability? I mean, that could kind of fall into that, that whole thing, because it's all about conservation, and.
Might be a stretch, but, yeah, we got to get the person first. One quirk that may come up, just to give you a heads up, is the way that ordinance is written now, the Conservation Commission needs to approve management plans by two-thirds or supermajority, they need five instead of four of the seven. So if there's, you know, if they don't get the five people, it might become more of an issue, but we'll see how that rolls out. Jake?
And what happens if they don't approve the management plan?
They recommend the management plan to us, and we approve it or accept it, so ultimately, it's the council that is responsible for the property. We own it on behalf of, you know, the town owns it, and we've delegated the Conservation Commission to manage it, so.
And you don't have a new management plan, and the old one sticks around.
Right, it's supposed to be updated every five years or so.
Without a majority vote, they wouldn't be changing the existing one, so.
Well, they need, they need a five out of seven vote.
Right, but I mean, without, sorry, without the supermajority vote, they wouldn't be recommending any changes, so the old one would probably, the old one would probably stay in effect, right?
There really isn't anything in the old one that says, we couldn't put in mountain bike trails, it just says, no trails on the summit, no bikes on the summit trail, and, and no biking on non-designated trails, which you could argue that every trail is a designated trail, so I, I don't see this as a.
And people bike there today.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I, I agree with that, I've made that point to the Conservation Commission, not adversarially, just like, hey, there's nothing in our plan that currently prohibits any of this from happening, other than you don't have cut trails, you haven't designated any trails, you know, constructed trails specifically for biking. I, I think the only thing that would need to formally change in that plan is if there's some consideration for summit, and what summit means, and how high up they, because how high the cone, they can actually go up.
We can talk offline, but, not offline, but not in front of the full council, so you guys don't have to listen, but I read it as the summit trail itself, not the summit. Is that not the right interpretation? Or you, you guys keep saying the summit, but when I read it, it was, no biking allowed on the summit trail.
In the management plan, that is absolutely correct. The concern from the commission isn't limited to the trail, it's, the, the trail is off limits because of certain vegetation at the summit, in the summit area, the area, so I'm, I'm using that term interchangeably. There's an area at the summit that's a concern for the commission. The trail is only off limits in the management plan, because it's, runs through that area.
But in the management plan, there is nothing that says that the biking couldn't go to the summit.
Correct.
Thank you.
As long as it wasn't on the trail.
Right.
The summit trail.
Right.
Yeah, I've had the same conversation with them, yes, yeah, I agree.
Okay. So I'll, I'll try and convey that, maybe Jake, you can join me, meet with Ryan, Ben, I think he's the vice chair, and we'll see what we can do. But it's good, I wanted to get the temperature, and I think I got that, so, thank you for that. Before we move on, just a question, our next meeting is scheduled for July 19th, which is two weeks from today. I can't be here?
I can't be here.
I remember saying you can't be here. Is there anybody else who can't be here on the 19th? Oh, you're not going to be here as well, so that leaves, assuming Council Bradley's around, that would mean there's only four of you, which I think you could meet, but do you guys want to postpone that? I don't think there's anything burning.
Do we have a public hearing? We didn't say anything.
We didn't say anything, no. I know we have a couple of things that we talked about earlier that can wait till August.
Why don't we leave it on for now, just to see, maybe we can have our conference next week, the pre-council meeting conference, to see if there's anything that pops up that needs addressment, but I don't have, there's nothing burning, then I don't see why we need it, right?
If we, can we cancel it without us all voting to cancel it?
Sure, and say that a majority of you aren't present, and I'll just put it up on the meeting, that they're.
Counselors just don't show up, the meeting wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah.